All right, good evening, everyone. We'll get started. This is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One, more than 24 hours in advance of the meeting. Notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors at the Education Service Center and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. And we have Superintendent Wimmer on the phone, who's, she's attending by phone tonight. And so I'm going to move the microphone over. And Superintendent Wimmer, can you confirm that this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it was.
Great, thank you. Invite you to join me to rise and recite the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. So we recognize a quorum of our board presence. We have one, two, three, four, five of us present. Kurt Fuller, sorry, Kurt Rappold is excused absent, and Nancy Justin will be joining us shortly. She had, she works in Milwaukee, and there's a bit of traffic. Hopefully, good traffic related to all the wonderful weather that we're having right now. So she'll be joining us shortly. But also, I just want to take time to welcome our two newest board members, Melanie Erda and John Donaldson. Welcome. I understand and know that the superintendent and other members of administration have put you through orientation sessions and things, and so just want to thank the administration for the, for the time for doing that, and to you folks for, for attending. And so look forward to serving with you. And here we go, we'll get right into it. Our next item is approval of the agenda. So the agenda was posted in advance for everyone's review. I would move to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Toni. Motion and second to approve the agenda. Any final discussion? Since we're all physically present here, we don't need to do a roll call vote, so I will call the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any votes? Thank you, the motion carries. All right, next, we have recognition of a retirement. What we'd like to do is, the board would like to take some time to recognize an individual who's retiring from the district after many years of service to our students, our staff, and our community. Our supervisors, administrators, colleagues have shared many words of recognition for this individual. So we'd like to read some of the comments that were shared with the board regarding this outstanding member of the West Bend School District team. And Joel, I think you're going to, you're going to read those comments for us.
I will. Scott, come on up to the front of the room, please. Scott is a special education teacher who has served the West Bend School District since the year 2000. Scott brings a deep sense of passion for everything he does. There is no person more dedicated about the success of students with special needs than him. He takes educating his students very seriously in and out of the classroom. Former students have many times returned to school after graduating to thank him for everything he did for them to push them to be the best that they can be. He puts a lot on his shoulders, but does so because he cares so genuinely for others. Scott is someone who brings fun to the workplace. Lunch bunches with Scott have gotten many colleagues through challenging days over the years. He knows when you need a good laugh as well as a shoulder to cry on. He is also someone who is constantly encouraging colleagues to go out of their comfort zone and is always encouraging a positive school spirit among his colleagues. He once coordinated for some teachers to dress up as famous tandems during homecoming week, which resulted in co-teaching teams leading their class for a day as Batman and Robin, Willy Wonka, Nupaloompa, Rudolph and the Bumble, Bert and Ernie, Stadler and Waldorf, and the two old guys, the two old guys from the Muppet Show. Not only did we have a lot of fun, but it also helped establish an even better rapport with our students as well as demonstrate school spirit. One of the other passions Scott holds dear is his commitment to educating others about the Holocaust. He has dedicated years of his life to sharing the human journey of the Holocaust with thousands of students and staff members and board members in West Bend. He is a former U.S. Holocaust Memorial Museum Teacher Fellow and continues to serve as a fellow for multiple global organizations dedicated to ensuring the world remembers the horrific lessons learned from the Holocaust. His work on this important lifelong project has left an indelible mark on the West Bend community. And on a personal note, Scott, it has been just an absolute pleasure to get to know you and see you up at the high school. And you're one of those teachers, when I saw you were retiring, I was a little sad because I have a kid who's about ready to be a freshman at the high school, and you're one of those teachers I wish my kid could be around. So congratulations, Scott. The school board wishes to congratulate you on your retirement and to thank you for the years of dedicated service.
Thanks.
You bet. Take three minutes. Take ten if you want.
I didn't know that that was going to happen.
I'd like to turn the microphone on right in front of you, buddy. There's.
Is it on?
Make sure it's on.
There it was, right there.
There we go.
There we go. Is that better?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'd like to thank the district for the opportunity to be employed here and have 22 years of serving the community and students from all kinds of backgrounds and all kinds of learning abilities. I've been especially proud of my work working in regular classes with regular education teachers, making sure that those students that are labeled as special education have access to the general education curriculum. As Joel said, my passion as an educator is the Holocaust. And Deb Croll and I have had the opportunity to put together four art shows. Our most recent one was last week. Joel was there. And our students really, this year, looking at their identity in order to understand the identity of 1 million children who died during the Holocaust, really did some deep work about who they are, what they believe, and what they stand for, and then translated that into pieces of art and written work. That's probably what I'm proudest of as a staff member here in the district. I think, I think the district is, we have a captain or a captaness who has a vision for what West Bend can be and how to get there. And I'm a little sad that I won't be in the classroom to experience that, but I'd like to thank the board for this opportunity to be recognized, and thank you for the support that you've given the teachers across the district over my 22 years. Much appreciated.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Joel.
All right, and we have another recognition, a different kind of recognition, an important recognition that Laura Jackson will walk us through, and this is recognition for Wisconsin Land and Water's Healthy Soil Poster Contest.
Absolutely. Corbin and Kayla, would you come on up, please? And I'm going to ask you to stand over here, okay? And then hold it up and face that way. Perfect. Thank you. So the Wisconsin Land and Water Conservation Association held a contest, a poster contest about healthy soil. And our students from Fair Park had, some of them had entered this contest. And so standing before you, what, just so you know, three of our students have placed in this contest. Before you tonight, we have two of our students that we're recognizing. Corbin Rome, who's in third grade at Fair Park, was, she placed first in the grades two and three category. And Kaylee Fox, who is also a third grade student from Fair Park, placed second in the competition. And you get to see their award-winning posters that they designed before you tonight.
Awesome. Nice job. Congratulations. The front of that camera right there, so anybody watching at home can see that. Those are cool. Good work. Well done.
Excellent, ladies. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming tonight. We're proud of you. Thank you.
And if, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
We also have the pleasure of recognizing Keegan and Kane. And so Keegan, would you come on up, please? Keegan has been participating in the Optimist Club Oratorical Contest. And this year, as a junior, he had entered the contest, which was run in, in March, and competed in his, with his speech that focused, that was called, not focused on, but was called "Staying Optimistic in Challenging Times." Excellent. And in this competition, he has advanced in taking first place in Zone Two in the state. And now, this month, you get to compete at the statewide level in the Optimist Oratorical Contest.
Yeah, this Saturday.
This Saturday. Where is it being held?
Uh, it's in the Dells, right? Yeah.
Excellent. Well, congratulations.
Congratulations. Best of luck.
Congratulations. Good luck.
All right, Laura, thanks for walking us through those. So congratulations to all the folks that we recognized tonight, and thank you to all the people who came as their, as their supporters. So this is the time where I'd like to pause and say, everyone here is welcome to stay for our entire school board meeting. But if you wish to make an exit, we'll just pause at this time if anyone would like to go home. So, thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, we'll continue on then with our planned agenda. Next, we have our student reports, and I think I, I see one of our students right here right now, name is Forrest. Come on forward. Please give us an update and tell us what's new.
So unfortunately, Alexa's had a soccer game tonight, so I will be doing East and West today. I'll start with East. Since the last board meeting, there have been many things going on with the student body at East. For athletics, West Bend girls' soccer have had a very successful season so far with an overall record of five and two. Track has ended at home this Friday, so good luck to all boys and girls JV and varsity who'll be competing at the high school. Softball team, boys tennis, baseball, and lacrosse have also been working hard during their seasons and bringing in many wins for West Bend East. Finally, for athletics, a huge congrats to those who signed with their colleges this week. There's been lots of college signing ceremonies and declarations this week, so congrats to all those people who are going on to compete in collegiate athletics next year. There are also various fundraisers coming up for some East athletics, so keep an eye out. And I think there's probably some of that information on the East Athletics page. And AP exams continue this week with the last one tomorrow morning, so good luck to those who are finishing up, and congratulations to everyone who finished those this week. And East NHS has elected their new officers for next year, so congratulations to those who were selected. Now for the West report. The high school symphonic band performed at the Wisconsin State Capitol this week. After not being able to do this for the last few years during COVID, it was great for the band to be able to return to Madison and play in the rotunda, so that was really exciting. I think there's some videos on the West Bend School District Facebook page. This month is also full of exciting days for seniors as we approach graduation. On May 2nd, we celebrated Scholarship Night, where we honored seniors from East and West with almost $900,000 in scholarships. So that's a really great night that we do as a community. This Sunday, May 15th, West has their senior athletic awards at 1:00 PM at the high school. And on May 27th, we will celebrate the annual grad walk. Prom will be celebrated at the Washington County Fair Park on May 21st. So for all juniors and seniors, tickets will be sold in the bookkeeper's office. I also just want to congratulate Mrs. Sarek for being named the high school levels Rolf's Education Foundation Award winner, especially during this crazy week of AP exams where she is AP coordinator and doing everything. Students who take AP exams see her as a literal superhero. She's wonderful. So just congratulations, the award is very well deserved. And thank you to all high school teachers during the last week for Teacher Appreciation Week. We celebrated that at the high school all week with generous donations of food and gifts to our staff from the community, so thank you for all community donors. Friday, April 29th, Student Council ran a fundraiser at the high school for an organization called Sunflowers of Peace. This organization has a mission of giving medical supplies to healthcare workers in Ukraine. And in one day at the high school, we raised $4,280, which is a remarkable amount for one day. So thank you to all donors and all the organizations at the high school who matched donations. West Bend West Spring Sports are off to a strong start, with West baseball and softball teams sporting winning records as of today in conference play. Boys tennis, girls soccer, and track have also kicked off their competition season since last meeting, and all West athletic events can be found on the West Bend West Athletics page. Dolphins show wrapped up last week, and all shows were well attended, and the show was well received with great reviews from the audience members. So congratulations and great job to all those who participated. On April 23rd, the state science Olympian competition happened, and West Bend had a first place finish in virology, a third place finish in disease deductives, and a fifth place finish in cell biology, and a sixth place finish in anatomy and physiology. So this is the best our team has ever done by far, so our team is growing, and congratulations to all of those, the state science Olympian competition. On Saturday, West Bend West had its annual Chasing the Chill Athletics fundraiser at the county fair park. It was a great evening for all who attended, and we are looking forward to next year's event. Last week, West Bend participated in the Wisconsin State Civics Games for the first time, and after two rounds, the West Bend team consisting of Owen Damcock, Danny Zoll, Isabel Pescador, and Paulina Schultz has advanced to the state finals in Madison, which is happening tomorrow. So congratulations to them, and good luck tomorrow at the state capitol. And earlier this month, West freshman Ara Malkone participated in the 2022 Tri-County 4-H Visual Arts Festival and received numerous awards in categories of People's Choice Drawing, drawing grades nine to 12, and other media grades nine to 12. So congratulations to Ara. And finally, I just want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to come share with you throughout this year. Everything has been having us throughout the school year and at the high school. It's been a great opportunity, and thank you all.
Thank you. Well done.
Right. Appreciate the updates and keeping us connected. All right, moving forward with our agenda. We have come to the public participation portion of our agenda, and I have one participant comment card, and it's from Mr. Monty Schmigey, so I'd like to invite him to the podium. And if it's all right with the board, Mr. Schmigey, I can personally attest that you are very familiar with the provisions policy we may decide. And so unless the board would otherwise request, I will waive the reading of it. And Mr. Schmigey, I've got a timer here for, for three minutes, we won't put it up on the board. But in compliance with that policy, I would just ask you to state your name and your relation to the district, please.
Monty Schmigey, I'm the resident of the district.
Great, please proceed.
Thank you. I want to speak to Social Studies 5 to 7, that's coming up later in the agenda. And first of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Reese and the Curriculum Committee for the time they have spent considering the feedback from community members regarding the social studies. Thank you, Toni. I do have some questions lingering with regard to this material. And actually, I'm going to forward these questions to the president as soon as I get done here. Where's your timer?
Oh, 2 minutes, 20 seconds.
Questions, what is the relationship of the priority standards to the rest of the standards? I still don't have a clear statement that defines that. When teachers evaluated the resources, was there any evaluation of the content other than the topics or titles that might be involved? What are the perceived strengths of the McGraw Hill? Dr. Reese has spoken of omitting some objectional material. I'm not sure how that would be implemented so that it's effective. There were, this shared with the board was this document, 39 pages of feedback, mostly having to do with the content in the resource. What is the implementation plan going forward? I don't, I don't see that in the PowerPoint for tonight, although I think Dr. Reese is going to address that to some extent. And will the overview documents be presented to the board at the end of this month if that's when the board is adopting this material? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schmigey. Thank you. All right. All right, this was our only participant. I'll stop the timer, and we'll continue on with our agenda. So next is our consent agenda, and there are a number of items on our consent agenda, including minutes of the April 18th, 2022 regular board meeting, and the April 29th special board meeting, disbursements posted through April 30, 2022, and a number of, a number of contracts. We have 10 new employee contracts, and for the, for the board's benefit, I know you saw that in there, this is, I'll say, an unusual time of year. It's kind of that seasonal time of the year where we renew contracts. And so there are 403 employees with renewed contracts. Eight resignations and four retirements. And then in addition, let's see, there's one other item. There's an item related to the community-based 4K reimbursement rate for 2022, 2023. So I'll pause there and mention that as part of our consent agenda, if there's any board member that wishes to have an item below the consent for further discussion, we can. Otherwise, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? Thank you, that motion carries. All right, and we thank Superintendent Wimmer for joining us by phone. We'll just make sure that her speakerphone and microphone are set up so everyone can hear her. Superintendent Wimmer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Want to do a volume check and everybody hear me okay?
We're okay? We're good. Oh, man.
All right. So I'm, sorry I can't be there in person, but I would echo your welcome to both John and Melanie for their first regular board meeting. I know we had a quick one for contact and things, but both of them previously took their oath of office, and they have spent hours participating in onboarding activities with myself, together with other members of the administration, visiting schools, serving in their role as board members at events already. So just thank you to them, and we do look forward to serving with them for their tenure. I would echo much like our student reports that last week was Staff Appreciation Week. Just a shout out to our students, families, and our community for making it such a special week for our staff. Also, we have an amazing team in HR who helps coordinate all of our activities here at the district, so a special thank you to them. One thing that's come up in the community is a game called Paranoia, where high school students in communities, going on next door in German Town, but it's seen, I know our high school principal put out a message. It's an intricate game of teams with their guns. It's called Paranoia. The kids have a lot of rules set up. They're, they're not supposed to be nuisance, but I know that some communities are experiencing unsafe activities, maybe going on property that they shouldn't, or some erratic driving. Just asking our students and families that, you know, any game that you're playing in the community, keep it safe, keep it respectful, play by the rules that you set for yourselves, and make sure you're representing West Bend well. Any questions on that or anything you might have heard?
Any questions?
Right. I've had a version of this type of game for several years. I can remember my own nephew when he was in high school playing it with water guns, so just, again, making sure our kids stay respectful of the community that they live in. We've got upcoming art shows. The district art show at the hub was extended by a couple weeks, that's until May 27th. If you didn't get to see it, please negotiate, it's amazing. The final art show of the school year is for advanced placement that will be made 20 minutes from 4:00 to 7:00. I would strongly encourage people to attend the reception with such talent at high school artists, and that they're actually there to describe their work and what inspired them. For music, the public is invited to the high school orchestra concert at West Bend High School Silverlighting Art Center. It's at 7:00 PM on May 19th. Also, on May 31st, the high school choirs will present Star Search, so something fun and exciting, they'll perform a variety of songs. Tickets for that are $5 each. As our student reporter noted on May 2nd, nearly $900,000 in just community scholarships were given out to 157 seniors from East and West. Such tremendous support from the Collins Organization, they administer many of the scholarships and coordinate so much, the Ziegler Family Foundation, the Rolf Educational Foundation, the Suter Peck Foundation, Frater, West Bend Mutual, just to name a few. It was a really amazing night. I know you heard a little bit of a teaser around the Rolf and Support Awards. At our next meetings, we'll recognize the winners of our annual Rolf Education Foundation Awards, as well as our Support Employee of the Year Award. You'll see those highlighted in our newsletter. Recipients were Stacy Baldwin, Grade 5 Special Education at Silverbrook, Amy Carver, Special Education at Jackson Elementary, Craig Barnes, Grade 1 at Jackson Elementary, and Susan Tarek at the high school, who then worked in advanced placement, gifted in Talented. And Support Employee of the Year Awards went to Josh Dolan, Pam Adams. Josh is a classroom paraprofessional at Klein. It was amazing when we gave him his award, his mother was there, and he's a second generation winner. His mom received that award in the St. Jim when he was at high school, so he was remembering that. Pam Adams is a classroom paraprofessional at Jackson, Tia Karasi, the secretary at Green Tree, and Christine Demar, who serves at the high school, as well as Ann Fitchner, Special Education Paraprofessional at Silverbrook. So just an exciting week during staff appreciation and being able to honor our staff. That's all I have for a report this evening.
Great, thank you. Any, any questions for Superintendent Wimmer as part of her report? All right, no questions here. Thank you. We'll move on then, and let's see. Oh, we have Policy Committee report. I'll turn over to Mr. Joel Onder for our Policy Committee report.
Thank you. Policy Committee met a week ago, a week ago Thursday night to start reviewing instruction policies, 300 series. And so we kicked that off a week ago. That's a very packed section of policies, 300 instruction. And so we just started that work, anticipate several more meetings before bringing anything to the full board for review. Later on in discussion item tonight, we will talk about first rating of 500 series, which is personnel policy. So I can talk about that when we get to that item, but just, we were supposed to have a policy meeting tonight, but we decided to cancel that. We'll get others rescheduled here soon, so that's it.
Great, any questions for Joel? All right, Joel, thank you very much. All right, we next move to our single action item for, for tonight, and we'd like Laura Jackson back to the podium to walk us through that. And I know this is an item that we had seen at the last meeting, correct? And it is student travel, obviously a competition for Skills USA and Future Business Leaders of America.
That's correct. You saw this last meeting, you have the trip details in the board packet, and we're very excited that our Skills USA students that have qualified for nationals will have the opportunity, given your approval, to go to Atlanta this summer, where they will not only compete in their field, but also receive professional feedback and see new developments in their area of study. They'll be exposed to a wider breadth of topics and professional quality performances, as well as competition and resources in their, in their chosen fields. They will have some time where they get to see some of the sites in the area, and our students will be flying into Atlanta, and while there, they'll use some public transportation to get around. That information is in your packet. We also have on the agenda a trip to Chicago for our future Business Leaders of America. And similarly, they, these students have qualified to participate in this competition. Chicago's drivable, so that they will drive down there and stay for the competition, do their own performance or their own competition, as well as have exposure to other areas of business and other professional opportunities.
I, I think this is a remarkable opportunity, Corl. So I move to approve the Skills USA trip to Atlanta, Georgia, and the Future Business Leaders of America trip to Chicago in the summer of 2022.
I'll second that. Motion and second to approve the Skills USA trip to Atlanta, Georgia, and Future Business Leaders of America trip to Chicago, Illinois in the summer of 2022. Pause and ask if there's any additional questions or final discussion. Hearing none, I'll call a motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you, the motion carries, appreciate it, Laura.
Thank you so much. I will, they will be very excited.
Good. Good luck. Be safe.
All right. So we're on to our discussion items, and we have a few related to Head Start, and I believe Jamie Molson is going to walk us through those. So our first discussion item is Head Start Basic Grant Carryover Request for 2021 through 2022. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. This evening, I'm bringing forward two carryover requests for discussion. This evening I'm bringing forward two carryover requests for discussion. For our new board members, a little bit of background, the Office of Head Start requires governing board approval when we're moving funds from one budget year to the next. The first carryover request is from our basic grant. I'm seeking to carry over approximately thirty-five thousand dollars from our transportation budget. This year, we had, you know, lower enrollment secondary to COVID nineteen, which resulted in fewer bus routes being needed to transport our Head Start students. The second, oh, should I wait to keep going?
Why don't you go ahead and discuss the second one?
Second one, sure, I appreciate it. And then the second carryover request is that coronavirus response and relief supplemental allocation of dollars that we received. We're seeking to carry over thirty-six thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars into the upcoming school year and into the summer as well. The majority of these funds will be used to allocate additional hours to our family advocates, so they can do more consistent check-ins with all of our families during the summer months when the students aren't in school.
Excellent, well, thank you. So these are discussion items, so we, we won't be bringing them forward here at this meeting for action, but this is our opportunity to ask questions if there are any. So ask our board members, Nancy?
Not really a question, but I mean, this is very typical. We do this almost every year. It's obviously just in different line items that we're carrying over. So I mean, this is not anything out of the ordinary. And obviously, if we had an opportunity to have some savings, I'm sad it was because we didn't have as many students. But I mean, it makes sense to carry it over, so.
And enrollment is looking really good for next year.
Awesome, that's fabulous.
Great. Any other questions or observations? Otherwise, we'll see both of these as action items on our agenda likely at our next meeting.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, that takes care of our first two discussion items. We're on to review of board operations. And Superintendent Wimmer, I think, were you going to kind of kick us off that, kick off the topic for us?
Yeah.
That's all right? It's okay, no problem, go, go right ahead, we have the microphone all set.
All right. So the next couple items are annual items as well. And they take place each spring when we welcome new board members. Again, they, they take office that fourth Monday in April. And then in the next subsequent meetings, we talk about operational items, which we'll do in the next two items. Nothing for action this evening either, just discussion points. So the first one is review of board operations. And we do an orientation. I've already met with each of the new board members and each of you are returning board members. The one hundred series is really what, guys, your work as the board, not just how meetings run and the operational side of things, but how we expect each other to serve, what we expect our meetings to be like, and representation for our community. There's also important policies, should there be any conflicts of interest, things like that. So we just make sure that everyone really goes through all of those. If you have any questions, feel free to give me a call. And then are there any questions now about the one hundred series?
Any questions? None here, Superintendent?
Great.
All right. Always a good reminder, appreciate it, putting all the, all the relevant documents in one spot for us to take a look at. Why don't we move then to the next discussion item, which is our school board meeting calendar for 2022 through 2023? And Superintendent, I think you're taking that one as well?
Yes, I am. So our school year runs July one through June thirtieth technically. So one of our first actions is to set the calendar for a year ahead. We generally follow a pattern of a second and fourth Monday. And then spring, due to conflicts such as spring breaks, other events, things like that, it might follow a pattern of a first and third. So I've analyzed the calendar and proposed the following dates. One thing that's unique is having two dates in July. We often have had one date, and we might just need one day in July. But when I was talking it through with HR, you know, there's a lot of contracts and things that need to happen here right in the pickup hiring season. So we thought it best to just at least have a date on the calendar and cancel if we don't need it. But we wanted to make sure we had that opportunity. So I follow that pattern, following the pattern of utilizing September twenty-sixth as the annual meeting as well. So it just gives you an opportunity to review these dates from your different perspectives, to see if there's any other conflicts that you're aware of before we bring it forward for action at our next meeting.
Great, so if anyone, after taking a look at this, has any questions, potential conflicts, sounds like bring those to Superintendent Wimmer. And when we see it next, we will incorporate that possibly into the next calendar when we discuss it as an action item. Any other questions, comments, Nancy?
Superintendent Wimmer, can you just, more for the benefit of probably our new members, but can you explain the September meeting, the second meeting? It would serve as our annual meeting, but we also actually get together as a board that evening as well, prior or after, or what? I can't remember, actually.
Yeah, we, we generally have a series of three meetings in that evening, where there's a public hearing on the budget, then there's the annual meeting, and then there's oftentimes, there might be a small agenda for a regular board meeting. So you can have as many as three kinds of items going down that night.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the calendar?
When I first started on the board, our Monday night meetings started at six-thirty. And I think years and years ago, the thought there was to allow for more members of the community to attend the meetings, speak during public comment. We decided to change that maybe three years ago, four years ago now, to five-thirty. I think we still have pretty good attendance from community members and plenty of people who speak. And if five-thirty doesn't work for someone who wants to make comments to the board, they can always email us. But I guess I just bring that up. I like five-thirty, but if, if there's a discussion on should we go back to six-thirty, now would probably be the time to do that.
You, you bring up a, a good point too, Joel, not just that, but the day of the week as well. It's been standard practice to do a Monday night meeting. I know when I was working with our newest board members, that, that worked as well. But if the board wanted to make a change to that, that day of the week, now would be the time as well.
So if anyone has feedback on those questions now, otherwise contemplate those and, and submit your feedback back to Jen Wimmer and we'll incorporate those as well.
I'm sure all the administrators in the bar in the room would like us to go to seven-thirty, but we'll.
And probably a Friday evening.
And a Friday, right, right. No, but obviously, we do oftentimes have a lot of staff and teachers and administrators who have to present on something. And so I think counting five-thirty is a little bit nicer than, because oftentimes they don't go home, they stay afterward until the meeting starts, so. But anyway, a good point, if somebody sleep on it and if you have concerns, call Chris or Superintendent.
Great. All right, and our next discussion item is reviewing board officers' terms and, and election. And so Superintendent Wimmer, we're kind of on this theme of kind of starting the year in the beginning and board reorganization.
Exactly, so this is a piece, so, and again, it's in policy. And a piece that we have, we have a formal roles of president, vice president, clerk, and treasurer. So at our next meeting, we'll have to take formal action. So it does this time that we review those roles. Those are grounded in policy, and I, and I put that narrative in the memo for you. But it would be an opportunity for anyone to express interest in those roles. It helps guide how I put together the next agenda. We've talked about this can have some nuances to how votes are taken. So I just need to be prepared for that night. So it's just a great opportunity for people to express interest in a role. Perhaps you'd like to return to a role, try a new role. But opportunity for the board to have dialogue about that now.
Great, so perhaps I'll, I'll kick that one off, because Superintendent Wimmer had asked me if I, if I am interested in continuing as, as president. And I'll just declare and say that I am interested. However, that should absolutely positively in no way discourage someone else from expressing interest as well. So if, if there, if there are others who wish to express their thoughts, that's, that's great. Otherwise, between now and next meeting, if you could share that with either Jen or with me. Like Jen was saying, if we have a number of people who are interested in one position, that's, that's a, that's a good problem to have. But what we can do then is we can be ready with ballots, so that if that's the way that we want to vote. Interestingly, that's one of the, I think it's the only time that a school board can legally use ballots to, to cast votes. But we would be ready for that. So any other, any other thoughts, any other remarks?
I think you lead a good meeting. The role of the president is obviously to lead meetings. All of our votes count the same whether you sit here or you sit here or you sit there. I think the volume of all of our microphones is set at the same level, so really doesn't matter, is my point. Other than I do think you lead a good meeting, have an experience doing that, you're willing us to do it again. I can speak for myself. I'm happy being just a trustee. I don't need a officer position, so. That's just, you know, I don't need to be a VP or treasurer or clerk, so. Or president again. But like I said, everybody's votes and comments are, count the same. So thanks for your willingness to step up. And if anyone else, then we'll hold on and.
Excellent. Any thoughts, John?
Anyone?
John, go for John.
Is this a yearly thing?
Yes, this is an annual thing, yes, absolutely. So that's, that's a good point. So any, any individuals that will occupy these seats, there will be reelection, reorganization, that's basically a year from now. Good question. Superintendent Wimmer?
Just wondering if anyone else wanted to express interest in the presidency at this time? Again, you can do so right now, or you can connect with Chris about the role. Joel served in the role in the past, or you can connect with me prior to the next meeting.
Silence means we all think Chris should do it personally, you know.
I, I know, the silence is coming across loud and clear.
We're all staring at Chris too, with like, kind of, you know, mean eyes, like, do it.
Well, while Joel did a very good job, no one is better to call him than Chris.
So the, the other role is vice president. We currently have an interim vice president. Paul Fisher previously served in the role, Nancy's doing that on an interim basis. Is there anyone who would like to express interest in that as a position for the coming year?
Don't everybody jump to.
I was gonna say, is this must be arm wrestling going around?
No, no.
Or being very civil about it.
If, if, if no one else has an interest, I would do it. I have served in that role before. Chris usually leaves me for one meeting or two, and then I am forced to run the meeting. But other than that, if no one else has interest, I, I would serve in that role.
Nancy?
Thank you. And then clerk, again, Aaron Dove previously served in that role. Right now, we have an interim clerk. Anyone expressing interest at this time for clerk?
This is Tony. I've, I've served as clerk in the past, and I'd be happy to serve as clerk again if, if that's what the board decides.
Thank you.
Others?
And then treasurer, I know Kurt is excused assets this evening. He had expressed interest to me prior about continuing in the role. Happy to continue to serve. But if there's anyone else interested in that role, you can let us know now. Or as in any role, if after some reflection, you would like to consider it, just let Chris or I know so we can frame our next meeting.
All right, any other questions or thoughts? This is helpful discussion as we, as we plan and organize the process for our next, our next meeting. Any other questions? All right.
I'd say.
Oh, yes, go ahead. That's quite right.
Is there, is there a better description or a more, I don't know, expanded role? You know, what these, what these positions actually do for the board? Or is this a?
I think in our policy, what you see in front of you, that is it. However, feel free to call me or Chris or, you know, Nancy, Tony. I've been the president, Chris has been the president, Nancy's been a vice president, Tony's been a clerk. We've all done the roles. I hate to say it, there's really not much to treasurer, clerk, and vice president. Vice president steps in for the president if the president can't make a meeting. President runs the meeting, works with the superintendent on the agenda for the meetings. However, this board being a high-functioning board, we've never had problems putting things on the agenda. Am I right?
No, absolutely.
So the other roles are really not much to.
Before you, it's actually written in our policy. I can grab for the team and share maybe some expanded things from WASB. They might have some expanded, but I think to Joel's point, the, you bet that might be to pick up phone and give a call to someone who is currently serving or has served in the role to understand the nuances of it. Or feel free to give me a call as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. All right, then why don't we move to the Board Committee and Delegate Assignments?
Great. And then one final piece of, of reorganization is serving as a delegate of the board in a couple spots. Our Cooperative Education Service Agency, CISA Six is, is what we're part of. Paul previously served on the Board of Control. I put their annual meeting date, they meet more consistently. I've shared with, all of our board members have received in the past their agendas, some of their meetings. I shared that with our newest members so that they have that contact and you see their annual meeting is set for the year. So we're seeking a representative for CISA Six.
Pause in there, any interest? Tony?
I have served in that role in the past and for our new board members. That's a good spot to fill, because you learn a lot about how the school board works and how the CISA works. And it does require a drive up to Oshkosh on a monthly basis. But I, I found it, I, I did that the first, my first year of serving, and I found it to be really helpful.
Do you know what they're doing to any of those virtually though?
That's a great question.
I think if they revert it back to in-person meeting, I don't know if they'll codelabel them in the future, but.
Yeah, Aaron has been doing that the last few years, so I'm not sure.
And Paul has gone in the past, so again, they, they might do mixed format, but I know their annual meeting is for sure in-person at the Oshkosh location. As you said, Tony, it's a nice opportunity where you get to engage in fellow board members from other districts, maybe pick up new ideas and kind of bring that back to the team as well. So no one has to jump at it right now, but I'll be looking for a name for that dance card formally at the next meeting. So if you can let me know between now and then, so that I can formalize that action. The next piece is going down to the Association of School Boards. We need a convention. Yes, it's, it's standard practice to have a delegate and an alternate. So WASB annually develops resolutions that they take to their general membership, and what board member from each district goes and votes on those. Joel Onder has served the past couple of years in this role for us. Joel, I don't know if you want to speak to that role?
Sure, this one is, you can get as much out of this or as little out of this as you want. It's a, it's a convention that's held in downtown Milwaukee. I've attended the convention in person and walked around and talked to vendors and things, networked with other school board members from all over the state. I've also called into the convention virtually, which obviously, you know, I get a vote on the resolutions, but you know, there was no networking. There was no talking to vendors and things like that. So typically, it's in January or February. I don't mind doing it, because I do think it's important that someone from our district has a voice and votes on the resolutions. But if someone had a lot of interest in doing this and actually going to the convention, it's, it's kind of cool, so.
And all board members have the opportunity to attend the convention, go to different sections. We just send one in to kind of the forum for voting. And we don't do that without discussion. So those resolutions would actually come before the board, generally in December, before the delegate goes, so we can have a conversation around their impact to our own district and where we would want to make our voices heard and how the delegates should vote.
All right. Again, I'm happy to do that one. If there's someone else who wants to do it, fine, by me, but. And that one again, is a ways away, yeah, so.
Yep, thank you. And then we have two standing committees. We have Policy Committee and we have Curriculum Committee. Thank you to our newest board members, they've already expressed interest in joining committees. Currently, we've got Chris, Joel, and John interested in, in policy committee for the year ahead. Are there any other board members who would like to join that team?
No others at this time.
Great. If anyone changes their mind, certainly let us know so that we can formalize that through action at our next meeting. And then our curriculum committee. Tony cannot be a committee of one. She, she works hard, but it's an off of her shoulders. I know that Melanie has expressed interest in joining curriculum. We need to just look at how to round out that committee, who those members will be so that they can set a meeting schedule and around the team. So who might be interested in joining the curriculum committee?
Everyone's being very thoughtful at this point. Tony?
I'll stay on the curriculum committee. I'm not sure if that, that is something I need to revendicate for, but I've, it's, it's been really helpful to dig, dig into that, so. Thank you.
And you're willing to continue, Tony?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Melanie?
Yes, I'm also willing to join the curriculum committee.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. If anyone else, after giving that thought, would like to jump into that, just let us know, either Chris or myself, so that we can get this agenda, those last couple items around reorganization, as we said, will be formalized through action at our next meeting together. So you have a little time to connect with each other, talk about things, and decide what you might want to sort of add in for, and Tony might want to serve.
Great, if we can just circle back for a moment to the CISA assignment thing. John, you had, you looked like you were ready to make some comments there, so I'd like to have you share those with us.
I was just gonna say I would be interested in learning more than.
Excellent, thank you. All right. Well, thanks, everyone. Sometimes it's a little bit of an awkward process of I'm interested in this or I'm interested in that, but again, it makes the administration a lot easier when we get to the appointments in a couple of weeks. So appreciate you sharing your thoughts, and if you have additional thoughts, please reach out to me or to Superintendent Wimmer. And Superintendent will be sure to include Kurt, who was not able to be here tonight, to make sure that his wishes are known as well, correct?
Correct, thank you.
Absolutely. All right, unless there are any other questions, we can move on to the next item, which is budget amendment for the 2021-2022 school year. Did I have that correct? And Mr. Andy Sarno is going to walk us through that. Good evening.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Wimmer. Thanks for the opportunity. I've been gonna walk through this just a little bit. This is something fairly typical at this point in the year. If you look at our calendar, I'm gonna make sure I can get it heard here. If you look at our budgeting calendar, the current one that we've proposed next year, it's a lot of the same dates. We adjusted for any changes as the weeks happen, but we make sure that we allow for time for discussion. That's what this is tonight. We would incorporate any changes, and I anticipate this being brought forward for action on May 23rd, but we would incorporate any, any discussion and wishes this evening into a final amended document. But the purpose behind this is to make sure that we're addressing a fluid plan, our fluid financial plan, which is the budget. Right now, we're in budget season for next year, and what happened a year ago at this point in time may not be the best idea. It may not have come to fruition. We've talked about people spending frugally this year, and so all of those changes that have happened over the last 12 to 14 months have been captured into an amendment. Just for informational purposes, we have a couple new board members, but this is something that we do once a year. I have just a quick few slides that, that talks about what, what is a budget amendment? What's the information just for discussion, so kind of where are we? But in December of every year, we create an estimate for what that next fiscal year looks like. In March, we start estimating revenues and expenditures. We start dialing in on, on certain numbers. This is for board discussion. We've brought that forward. In May, we have preliminary budget discussion approval. September, we have our annual meeting. October is when we set that final levy, budget, and mill rate. So again, we're well past that this year. But so time, again, proceeds in a few months pass. But again, May is where we come forward with an amended budget, again, for discussion, and then action based on that spend plan changes that have taken place over the last 12 months. And then just as we wrap up the final year, August, they come, they come towards the end of June for a little bit of preliminary work, but the meat of their work that is in August, where the audit begins, and that's usually finalized by November, December, depending on availability and timeline. So that's where we are right now, is May with a budget amendment. This is just a screenshot right off of the Department of Public Instruction budgeting page, but they actually have just a dedicated page to budget amendments, gives the requirements for that. It's a Class 1 notice, so discussion tonight, a formal document is attached for discussion. We put that into a publication, into our newspaper. It's usually one of those that, some people pay attention to it, I hope so, but it's usually about three inches by about 10 or so. So it summarizes the information even more so than what I'm going to be presenting this evening. So just again, just a little bit of, just, this, this, there's guidance out there. There's certain very specific requirements. That amendment, it's a very formal process. It's very typical. Again, we do it every year, anywhere as early as April, as late as June, is when we've done it in recent years. It takes board action. We have to have that publication, I believe it's 10, 15 days, when that has to be in the newspaper after the action takes place, making sure that we're being transparent with the process. It does represent good stewardship of our money. It allows discussion, awareness of our spend plan, how that changes, because we even talk a little bit. There's notes in the document that I'll share tonight, and it allows for an opportunity to address any priority or need changes. And so again, based on a year ago versus as we're wrapping up the last month or two of the fiscal year, it allows us to meet some of those needs that were not identified earlier. What next steps do we have? So there's supplemental information. We're gonna discuss what the original budget included, broken down into different categories that have meaning into a recommended amount. We've explored considerations. We've talked to engaged schools, our budget owners within our departments, a lot of the people that are sitting at the back of the room right now. And again, this discussion tonight may prompt some changes. You'll be happy that there's a balanced budget in front of us. Financially speaking, we're in a little bit even better position than we were in the fall when we set the final information. But we're able to include any of that in the final information that would be brought forward. It's anticipated for action again on Monday, May 23rd. Therefore, I indicated 10, 15 days, 15-day notice, where we would publish that summary budget. I do have a presentation where I'll go over the document. There are notes in that. It was attached in the public information, but I'd be happy to have any questions or part discussion right now, just kind of the process itself within amended budget.
Any questions on the process? All right?
Good, thank you. Again, attached to the, this agenda item, and again, I hope this is a very similar-looking document. I bring it forward for the preliminary budget, which we'll be looking at next year's preliminary budget very soon, in the next meeting or two. I bring it forward on a quarterly basis where we compare this year's activity to last year's activity through certain periods of time. When we break this out, our chart of accounts, we're fund-based accounting, meaning we have to silo some of our money. General Fund, which is Fund 10, I document in this our beginning balance from October and then the recommended May amount that we have at this point in time. Same beginning balance. Revenues have changed very slightly, actually a little bit of a decrease in revenues, and that's reflective of, and I'll share that in the notes down below. I have a point of that, but it reflects a little bit of less federal money needed this year. Some of the stimulus money, SR2 and SR3, to balance the budget. Less money was needed because the expenditures, as we'll look, have also decreased. So again, the zero in yellow noting that we have a balanced budget, beginning and ending balance, fund balance remains the same at $15.7 million. And in those notes, I've indicated those variances that we've indicated with the local revenues, the federal dollars, what's happened with some of these expenditures, a little bit of dip in benefits, but we've had a better fill rate with salaries this year. We gave some mid-year market adjustments that are reflected here. So all of the changes from October until now get are reflected based on the anticipated activity as of June 30th. Fund 21, you'll see a large increase, and that's due to a lot more student club. This is literally stu-driven money that are helping each one of our schools, all the way from elementary, Badger, Silverbrook, the high schools, have a Fund 21 account. But these are activities that are, have exceeded where we originally anticipated. All of their money that's coming in, money going out for all of their fundraisers, donations, all of their clubs, a little bit more activity, we've now reflected that change. Their spend plan is just a little bit different. From time to time, they'll raise money this year and spend it, hence why there's about an $80,000 increase in the fund balance. Next year, they may have an $80,000 loss because they've spent the money that they've raised, but they do have a healthy fund balance primarily in the high school. But that's reflected here. Fund 27 is our special education. I call special education the programs and services for the students with those individualized education plans, so it's meeting that that demographic of students needs. Revenues and expenditures reflect where we anticipate. Again, just a very slight increase, some subtle balances based on, or variances based on where we believe there is money, those need to be adjusted for those programs and services. Fund 29, earlier, Ms. Mossom came up and she shared our Head Start update. We, we did receive some additional dollars from October until now. That increase is reflected both in the expenditures as well as the revenues. We're not, not allowed to carry over fund balance, which is why you don't see those yellow, yellow dollar amounts. But any unspent monies, hopefully, she's adjusted appropriately. I believe she has, we've been very engaged with her budget planning, and this reflects the anticipated activity through June 30th again. Our 30s funds, where we start to get into our referendum as well as our non-refereendum debt. So first, our non-refereendum debt. We do have some fund balances still become available, but the revenues and expenditures reflect the principal and interest payments. We only have a couple of years left on this, so it'll be $11 next year. The following year, we would be utilizing that fund balance for the final payment. But again, this is reflective of that prepa, the, the prepayments, repayment schedule when that debt was incurred. That bottom section of this page, Fund 39, which is our referendum approved debt, where the community approved prior debt. We will be paying those. This is reflective of an update. Now, there is a large variance here, but big piece of this, two, two actual pieces. The first one is the refunding that took place last July, and so that's where we refinanced money. It's recorded in our system. It doesn't impact anything, but it was just a refinancing. That activity needs to be reflected. Tony, did you have a question? Okay, all right. Looked like you're in right nature, green button. On, as well, the second piece is the defeasance that the board just recently took action on, and that will impact our expenditure, our shared costs, and impacts our state aid for next year. But all of that activity is now changed. And so again, it reflects the repayment, the refunding, the defeasance in accordance with what board action has taken place. It's the world's lowest scroll, or I apologize for that. Bear with me, there we go. Fund 41, our 4Ds, funds are related to capital improvements. We have both a Fund 41, which is our capital expansion, as well as our Fund 46, which is an improvement trust. These are monies that we've put into this fund. I say that it takes an act of, act of God to get the money out unless we spend it on facilities. So in, in this budget, within our Fund 41, at, as a resolution at the annual meeting, we deposit $1.665 million into the account, and we anticipate approximately that amount of money to be expensed this year. There is a fund balance that's carried forward, and it would be strategically used in conjunction with a, a facilities needed project at some point in time. Fund 46, which is our capital improvement trust, again, prior years where monies were deposited, there's a five-year waiting period. We're beyond that waiting period. However, those monies, again, could be used on some type of project, facilities-related project at any point in time. Unfortunately, for both of these funds where we carry that fund balance, interest income has become very minimal over the last couple of years, even this year, we've noticed from last year. But it is starting to crest up a little bit. We've adjusted a little bit here at year-end, so hopefully, we'll be able to hit some of those targets. No new money into Fund 46, which is that improvement trust fund that we've done in prior years when the surplus has become available. However, we do have, and this was from the Barton sale of Fund 49, the bottom section here, and we're required to put, or the board chose at the time that we sold the Barton Elementary building to put that into a facilities-related fund. Fund 49 represents the money of that sale. No new money coming in or out, but again, it's available for future use. Next area, and there was a fairly big variance in a positive way this year. Our participation, I'll talk about meal prices on the next agenda item, but Abby Padilla and her team have done a really nice job in being able to market the free meals that have taken place last year as well as this year. The federal reimbursement has drastically been improved due to that participation. They have been more fully staffed this year. There's a period of time in the fall where we had code go through the program in some of those kitchens, but they've been staffed very well. So some of those market adjustments that were made earlier this year have had a positive impact on that. And so again, the budget reflects the staffing, the meals, the food, the consumables. We are procuring some additional equipment this year, a little bit less than originally anticipated, but some of the kitchens will be outfitted with some improved equipment, again, for that meal quality moving forward. Fund 73 is our other post-employment benefit trust. These are dollars that have put in, been put into this fund for the use of retiree pension specific to health insurance continuation. No change from what was originally anticipated in the fall. Some of the expenditures will be adjusted mid-July as we approach the audit based on how well our self-funded health insurance performs. But again, nothing anticipated at that time until we receive some new documents from our auditors and our benefit consultants. Fund 80 is our community services fund. This is another one of those where we take a look at, at the annual meeting. Disclose those programs and services, so this, this has to be things outside of a typical school day. So middle school sports, our school resource officers, our pool, some of our pool, any of those hours outside of where we would be using them for co-curriculars or even academic areas. But some very subtle changes. We're staffed just a little bit differently with what we're able to offer with no school sports this year. So a little bit of an increase in the salaries and benefits, but otherwise very minimal changes with our community services fund. Last piece, and this is actual dollars. I was actually able to match this up. This is our boys hockey program. We're the fiscal agent, so we run that through a separate fund. Our participants, both from East is West, we transfer money in from the general fund, but then we also collect dollars from the participating school districts that we're in the cooperative with. So these dollars that you're seeing, they're actuals. Again, they were just a little bit more frugal this year. Didn't quite spend the money that they originally anticipated, but it actually reflects the activity that took place. Very close to zero, and any money, additional money that was left over, we would give back to the school districts. Anything that was short, where we're in the negative, we would actually be asking for a few dollars back. But again, they're very, very closely in that neutral this year. It's a summary of all of our different funds. Again, balanced budget, nothing impacting any mill rates at this time or anything like that. This is literally just an update in the budget from October.
And so procedurally, Andy, this will come back for, this will come back for a vote?
Yes, please.
Correct. Okay.
Excellent. And then it's the final adjustment, if you will, before you close the books and do the audit?
Exactly. So any, in, of all the only others, so if there is a discussion, say, Andy, let's do this or that tonight. We can make some adjustments. The only other thing, unless something came up that was new, I would make sure I disclosed that at the meeting, at the next meeting, meaning if there is an unanticipated expenditure in area that we need to do address, broken boiler, cooling system, something like that. But this is anticipated to be the final document.
Can Fund $49 be put into Fund 46? And why, I guess, why didn't we do that at the time? And I guess, why didn't we do that at the time?
Yeah. At the time that those dollars were received, Fund 41 and Fund 46, and I hope I don't bore you too much here, it's a little bit different that our district has a Fund 41 and a Fund 46 because they serve different purposes. First was created Fund 41 in that the way that when we spend money, that impacts our shared cost, but then impacts the following year's state aid. Fund 46, so that's more for property-rich districts, which we are. Fund 46 is actually smoothed out when expenditures happen, and so it impacts lower property-value districts differently. So they serve a different purpose for districts that have various property values. We've in the past utilized that when surplus dollars were available to help balance out and butt up against certain thresholds to maximize that next year's state aid. We've not had the availability to do that the last couple of years, but when we received those Barton sale, those dollars, that $540,000, if it would, and we did have the option to put it in 46, it would have actually impacted our state aid adversely that following year. So what we can do is, Fund 49 is acting, it's there for a purpose, and then what we would do is when we expended those dollars, we have the ability to plan how that would impact a future year's state aid. So there was some strategy behind it. What we couldn't do is put it in Fund 41, again, because that's a resolution at the annual meeting. A great question, which I'll...
And Fund 46 is a five-year waiting period before you can expense dollars. We're past that, but if you put in new money, the clock doesn't start over or anything, right?
Correct, yeah. A lot of districts at one point in time literally deposited $1. They had a resolution that created Fund 46, just like we did. They put $1 into that fund, and it started the clock. So no new money that would be transferred into that. There's no waiting period. That's all complete.
Thank you. Other questions? Andy, you have some time to look at this in between this meeting and next, and present questions to your superintendent, Wimmer?
Exactly. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for the presentation. All right. Then, oh, we're on to meal prices. Meal prices for the 2022-2023 school year.
I'm just going to keep it out for just a couple more minutes. Meal prices are in front of us again for discussion this evening. It's anticipated that this would be brought forward for the May 23 meeting for action. Purpose behind that is just to help families start planning for the next school year. Some of our documents that we share incorporates those, these dollar amounts, these meal prices into them, and it also allows us to plan a little bit. Coincidentally, we are right now in the process of hiring a new food service director, and that person will be tasked where we're bringing this forward. How does all of this fit? A big piece of this, and I just shared a moment ago about that federal, those federal dollars that we've received for the meal reimbursement over the last couple of years, participation is key. We're going back to a paid status next year. I'd be remiss if I didn't share. Families, please get out there. Fill out those free reduced forms. It's surprising who qualifies when you have two or three children in your family. Some unfortunate things can happen on occasion. Please fill that out. But generally speaking, this is for those families that don't qualify for that meal assistance. It allows us the opportunity to bring forward and build nutritious meals that children or students will like, and that we're able to provide that quality meal. What's been incorporated here as well, and I'll get to that, the actual meals in just a moment, but again, that participation, the quality of meal, we're required to meet USDA regulation. About every three to five years, the Department of Public Instruction will come on-site. They will cut labels off of cans, throw all of our nutritional components into a computer that tells us if we're meeting that. The last one that we had was about two years ago, came out great, but we need to meet those USDA requirements, the Department of Public Instruction requirements. The meal price, the meal price, there's also a calculator through the USDA. What's being presented, both for the current year that we're in right now, even though that didn't apply, as well as the recommended amount for discussion at this point in time for consideration. Again, it meets that meal calculator that's required by the USDA. Again, there's a one-page document shows our current meal prices, as well as for consideration, what would be brought forward at a future meeting for action, the way from elementary. Please.
You know, I was going to ask this. I'm glad that you're, unfortunately, I'm happy to see that the prices we're considering for next year are higher because myself and I think everyone is paying close attention to inflation, and is the price that you have on this sheet, is that the price that the students will be charged, or is that our actual cost?
This is the price that the students will be charged.
Okay. And does the actual cost to produce these meals, is there a gap?
The intent of the program, and again, going back to the participation, participation is the biggest variable. We take a look at the meals per hour of labor, so there's a lot of different things, a lot of different metrics that we're monitoring to make sure that based on how much we're paying for the food and how much the labor component is, to monitor all of that and make adjustments, even to the point, this was actually one of the questions that we asked the applicants for the food service director position is, tell us about menu fatigue. What is that? We have a four-week menu cycle, and they can start to see trends where we start to see dips, where kids are either not eating or bringing their own meals. We need to address that, monitoring the price of the meals, make sure that we're selling enough meals on a daily basis to be a little bit profitable. And by a little bit profitable, we need to be sustainable. They have a fund balance, I just showed that. We're actually going to be at, this fiscal year-end, as of June 30th, we'll be exceeding the maximum fund balance within our nutrition program, within Fund 50. And the DPI is going to call us, and they're going to say, you have to spend some of that money. Now, I wouldn't advocate to have a recurring expenditure be used for that fund balance, but what can we do to continue to invest money in our program with equipment, with meals, grow it, to make sure that, not irregardless of the meal price, but just to make sure that that participation, that our families and children are finding value in eating our meals?
Are they looking to see, and looking in the garbage cans too, to see how much is getting thrown away?
I, we do that.
Okay, good.
That's one of the status, and I spent a fair amount of time in the kitchens, again, back during that wave that we had. I think I spent time in just about every kitchen this fall. That's the sad, that was the saddest part. I love seeing the kids. I was very pleased with the rest of the kitchen teams that knew in October every single kid's name, and they're not looking at, they just got to know that, but that's the one thing is the waste. So how can we minimize that?
I mean, I'm glad that the person that you're hiring is considering menu fatigue, and I just think the garbage can might be another indicator.
We can, I don't know, Mr. Ross would probably agree. We can tell when those dumpsters are full. It's not...
So back to price, though, and cost. I don't, I mean, inflation is here, it's, we don't know, no one has a crystal ball, so I don't envy you trying to anticipate what food costs are going to be. What is, is there a contingency plan for what happens if things do look different than we hope that they are, and where would the money come from?
So what I would anticipate is a one-year contingency, not purposely, not purposely to begin with, but the contingency is, we do have a healthy fund balance. We're able to monitor the expenditures, the revenues and expenditures on a monthly basis with those claims coming in and expenditures going out. We do have a healthy fund balance.
So you're saying that these prices would stay the same? They, we wouldn't suddenly in the middle of the year increase the prices of the meals for the kids? Okay, that they're paying?
Correct. When the board would take action at a future meeting on these, it would be for the year.
Thank you.
So several questions. So did we see a large uptick in the number of students eating our lunches and breakfasts because they've been free?
Yes.
So 10%, 20%, 30%? What are we talking?
20% to 30%, and I don't want to guess, I shouldn't even throw that out. If you like that number, I can research that and get that to you in a weekly update.
Well, I guess I'm just thinking, as you're looking at this and you're trying to estimate costs for the future, and you're trying to look at how many students will be coming through, and I understand every year we have a push to say, you know, fill out the free and reduced lunch, and, you know, make sure if your family qualifies, but realistically, when you're looking at this, you probably have to go off of 2019 numbers minus the idea that we've lost, you know, 100 students or whatever that number is, you know, and then kind of determine, you know, if costs of food are going up by, I don't know, some instances probably more than 20% on certain items like eggs right now. You know, what does that look like? So I guess I just want to be assured that when you were estimating your costs, that you were actually using true 2019 numbers as opposed to what we've seen in 2020 and 2021?
We are part of a purchasing cooperative, so CISA II, we just talked about, CISA VI with your participation on that. CISA II, and they all do different things. CISA II is a purchasing cooperative, so we have dollars locked in for that. We've been issued our commodities guarantee for next year, which is the government-issued food, so we've built a lot of those into the metrics that have, again, based on participation, this is doable. So we really need to monitor that. We need to make sure that we continue with those families that have relied on us the last couple of years, that that continues. And we're not on a monthly basis and taking a look at the labor that we have is the other variable, because food cost is what it is based on that CISA II cooperative. How much productivity are we getting out of our staff that helps us maintain that neutrality cost-wise for profit-loss margin?
Is it your impression that these prices are generally consistent with others, other prices of other districts?
Yeah, so that is, so there's the USDA matrix that we utilize, and then as well, an extensive survey went out, including, and so through that CISA II cooperative, that included almost all of the neighboring districts. So we were able to not only look at where they're at this year, where they anticipate they'll be next year. We've shared this information with them, tentatively with an asterisk on it, so we've been able to, because families do talk and they go to baseball games, and so we need to be competitive. We're very mindful of that when we take a look at any increase.
Other questions? All right, this is a discussion item, and I appreciate the discussion, and so we'll see this as an action item on the next agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And next, we're going to move to social studies, grades five through eight, private resource. I think Dr. Til Reese is going to walk us through that item. Good evening, Dr. Reese.
Good evening. I'm just going to pull up the presentation. All right. So I have a few slides I'd like to walk through, and then I also have a document with a lot of questions and feedback that, I'm not going to go through that whole document, but there were some new questions that came forward in April that we didn't have a chance to take to curriculum committee, so I'd like to just talk through that part of it. So first, I want to thank you for the opportunity to bring this forward. This is really discussion tonight, with then bringing it forward again at the next meeting for possible action. I have a couple, hold on one second here. There we go. Okay. So through this presentation, I'm going to just go through a few things. It's going to be a quick overview. Oh, this is the wrong presentation. Hold on, we're going to pull up the right one. I have two tonight. My apologies. There we go. Okay. So I'm going to talk through these objectives for the right presentation. So this is an update of our current status of fifth through eighth grade social studies. I'm going to talk a little bit about the feedback and the timeline thus far, and then focus on kind of the next steps to move forward. So currently, our structure of social studies in the district is really, with our intermediate school and our middle school, we really have an opportunity to teach standalone social studies, and it brings kind of a unique opportunity because then those students move into high school social studies. So it's kind of a unique opportunity that other districts don't have. The alignment of this fifth through eighth grade is really critical because it means we can give students aligned standards-based curriculum in those four grades before they move into high school social studies. And so part of this adoption or possible adoption is looking to align those resources so they have that content knowledge as they move into high school. Dr. Yer. Yes?
Can you explain, or at least, when I first started looking into all this, I thought alignment was important because of the standards that the state set, but it's also so that we're not repeating things throughout a student's career here in our district, as well as making sure there are no gaps of things we're unintentionally not teaching. Would that be correct?
That's correct. You said that very well, and there's a lot, there's several reasons for alignment, like you said. It really is the standards from the state, and like you said, then just looking at our different grade levels, and because we have an intermediate school and a middle school, which is different than districts, other districts, we have standalone social studies courses in fifth grade and sixth grade, which in other places you might not see that. So it gives us this unique opportunity to line up all those standards, line up all the curricular resources, and make sure students have a solid backbone when they move into their high school courses and make some choices. So thank you. So Andy, you're right, this mouse is touchy. Oh, let's see, let's see if we can... Okay, so, hold on. There we go. Okay. So this is really the process that we followed over the last couple of months, and just to point out, we started this work in October, and so the curriculum committee has worked really hard along with district stakeholders, district teachers. We've had five kind of district stakeholders that have really given us a lot to think about, given us a lot of feedback, and really engaged with us really deeply in looking at the resources and giving us like other options and things to just dig into, so I really appreciate that. But this is really kind of the bullet points of the different things that we've done. So we created and sent out an RFP, which is a request for proposal. We scored and rated those responses. One of the things that Mr. Schmiggy had asked about was social studies priority standards. So that was something that was also created, and those social studies priority standards, because he asked about that, those will be brought together with the state standards, which we adopt in July as part of another board process. So that's kind of, it's joined with this, but it's also part of another board process. So those priority standards would be complementing the state standards in terms of what we bring forward in July. We invited teachers to review curriculum tools with vendors. We provided open links for the school board, community stakeholders. Those materials were open for a month. The really cool thing about that is we did it in a little bit of a unique format this time. We did have computers set up at the library, we also had them set up here, but the way the links were set up from the different vendors, but they were 24/7 links. So Tony had the great pleasure of being able to view this at 8:00 at night if she wanted, or on the weekend if she wanted, or any, like 24/7 anytime from any computer. So they provided like platforms where people could log into them from home. So basically, it was kind of a unique experience, but very, very helpful.
And that was for the public, too?
Correct.
Not just board members or administrators?
Yeah, it was, it was very nice because it gave a wide-open view and lots of time to view it. So we did have that open for a month total. In addition, I held a social studies public forum where I invited anybody in that wanted to come in and look at the priority standards. Part of that was also then looking at those links to get into those open documents and helping people log in and see how they could set up and get that access to that, so we did that one night here, actually, too, so that was great. We placed those links on our website, so again, people could view those all the time anytime. And then we brought the feedback and questions to the curriculum committee, and several times just kind of for discussion at the full board. One of the things is with the kind of shift in board election and things going on, and the depth of the resources to look into, the curriculum committee asked for a couple extensions on looking at the resources. And so that kind of gets us to where we're at today, and I'm going to go through a little bit of those timelines. Let's see. So again, this is kind of, this is just a schedule of when things were open for review, and I don't need to... And I don't need to go through that again, but I just wanted you guys to have that documentation again. So it was really open. And then actually, there were a couple of community members that when we were about ready to close, they said, "We need a couple more days." So we did that. We extended it a couple more days and then brought the rest of that feedback forward that they were able to add in. So that was great. So we initially, when we did that, when we went through that process, we had two vendors. And so the two vendors were put out, like I said, in these, in these public forums and these digital padlets, they were called, for people to look at. And so people really went through and reviewed both of those curricular resources. After we went through that, and we went through it several times with curriculum committee, we narrowed down to one vendor. And that vendor, right now, was the one we brought forth, and that's McGraw-Hill. And so that's the one that we then spent a lot more time on getting into even further, having the curriculum committee dig into further and spending some more additional time looking into. So this was the original timeline. And as you can see on this original timeline, we were really kind of looking to bring this forward in February. But based on public stakeholder feedback, based on curriculum committee review feedback, we extended that so people would have more time, could give more feedback, could look at resources even further. And so we did that. And so that brings us to a revised timeline. And so this is really the revised timeline. And so the revised timeline is to kind of combine these things together. And so actually, this week for the school board discussion, and then hopefully May 23rd to seek approval on the resource proposals. So I want to thank you for letting me present these slides, but I also want to get a little bit into the FAQs. And so I'm going to go into that document if you don't mind. Now, this document, I believe, is 39 pages. It's quite lengthy. This document is a compilation of every piece of feedback we received. We received really primary feedback from five community stakeholders. We did, at one board meeting, have another two people speak at the board meeting that weren't part of the written feedback. So I included them as a total of seven stakeholders. But really, most of the primary feedback came from a really stealth group of five people that had a lot of interest, and that was really great. So there's a series of feedback things that we have worked through with the curriculum committee. But in addition, on, and I'm going to scroll to page 27. And I did number the pages after I met with Melanie and John because I realized the document was so long, we needed to page numbers. So now I can say it's page 27. So I'm going to scroll to page 27 because in April, we received some other feedback that we hadn't gone through at the curriculum committee. And I just want to go to that. This little piece here, also, I gave an updated piece of feedback on this. And so I'm just going to quickly, before I get to page 27, talk about that. So we originally got feedback on 227 about the current events piece in the curriculum. After talking about it at curriculum committee, I went into it again and gave some additional kind of investigation to it. So part of it is, in the fifth grade curriculum, there's a tool called By the Way, and it's a current events blog. And so that blog itself had some people concerned about some of the topics in the blog. And so what we, I reached out to the vendor, and we will be blocking that blog from the student accounts. So it's not that we won't teach current events, but just that particular blog will then have teachers set up. When they are doing something with current events, it will go through like a curriculum process and pieces like that. So just that's a little clarity on one from earlier. Right now, I'm going to go to page 27. So then, starting at the bottom, on board two, there were some questions about the process of the standards and questions about the process of aligning the standards, who's choosing them, those kinds of things. And so I went through that and just kind of tried to clarify some of those questions. And part of it is that the curriculum is aligned to the state standards and that we would then use the priority standards and the state standards together to then align the documents and the lessons that were taught. And on the next page. Curriculum implementation and the process and, sorry, my glasses probably aren't strong enough, and the process and feedback for launching, kind of those materials. So one of the things that we're going to do, should this be approved, is we will have teachers come together and do some of that work together. So part of it is bringing in the resources and the tools, and then having teachers collaborate around it to set up their actual lesson plans from those resources and tools. The really wonderful thing about this curricular resource is it provides a lesson plan sort of template with an array of tools that teachers can plug things into. And that's the work that we would do in the summer, is build those lesson plan templates so they have those ready for the school year. So we have one day set aside, actually, at the very end of the school year if we need it. And then one day set aside in the summer for teachers to come in and do some of that work. And then the last question is kind of about teaching the items in the curriculum and teaching everything and who kind of decides what's being taught in those pieces and how that happens. And part of that, again, is we reached out to the vendor with some of the things that people had concerns about and just got some clarity on that. So there are certain things that we would purchase, certain things that we wouldn't purchase, just making sure we're meeting those community needs. And then in addition, we would meet in the summer to build those tools and then bring those forward to the board, anything that is kind of rebuilt or needs to be approved again. So hopefully, that answers some of those questions. And then all of these photos that are listed in the bottom, we've gone through those pretty extensively at curriculum committee, and they've been included in other board docs. So I'm not going to walk through those unless somebody has particular questions about those. But this doc has been available, I think, two or three times, but it's gotten longer each time it's been presented, so just to be aware. So I guess then I ask if there's any questions or discussion on the social studies curriculum?
The discussion about all the photos and concerns, those are, have been video recorded in past meetings, so it's easy for anyone to go back and look at the discussion on those.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you for the context. Questions? Melanie?
Oh yes, I have a question. Although this is my first time sitting up here on the board, I have been to all the meetings, I think since the beginning of the year. So I have, you know, listened to a lot of this.
Yeah, good context, right?
Yeah. But so I heard, I think, in one of the meetings, somebody had mentioned that just because current events are so kind of controversial, like what is accurate, what's not, especially with the last two years. Somebody had mentioned that they wouldn't be teaching anything after 9/11, right?
Correct.
But then you had mentioned in some of these other comments that like though you aren't using the By the Way section, that you would still be teaching current events. So what would be the resource that you would be using for that? Or, you know, what are we considering current events? Because September 11th was kind of a while ago.
Yeah, so that's a really good question. So there's a couple of different contexts there. So the By the Way piece is only for grade five. So, and the piece that we were talking about with 9/11 is specific to the U.S. history book. And so 9/11 goes up to page 870 in the U.S. history book. And I often have teased people, if you want the U.S. history book, I'm happy to have you take it home and look at it because it really is about 50 pounds. It's really thick. The thing that we can honestly say is that after page 870, first of all, I don't believe when we build the units, we will get to page 870 in the school year. I believe that we won't have the time to do that, or we'll have enough standards, we'll met the state standards without getting to that. The other thing is, the curriculum committee really decided that after 9/11, there's a lot of history that, and I think the curriculum committee used the word marinate, that people probably wanted to marinate on before we did a lot of lessons on that. And so we've agreed that we won't go past page 870 in the U.S. history book. And so does that kind of answer what you were thinking?
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering, because you had mentioned, obviously, the By the Way blog, it said you will still be teaching current events. So like what kind of current events would you be teaching? Or what are you considering current? Because would it be after that September 11th period?
Right. So those two things don't overlap. So the By the Way blog is for grade five, then the U.S. history book is the 870 book, 870-page book. So the piece for current events with U.S. history, for example, is all of that is in the lesson planning sections that the teachers have to put together. And if there's anything from current events, we'll be kind of vetting through that when they build their lessons over the summer. So if there's anything that's being taught about that, we would vet it and know about it. It wouldn't be something that would just randomly be brought in.
And so then the teachers will be building their own lessons? Or are you building it? Because I know some of the, like going through that really long document, obviously, there's a lot of material in there.
Yeah.
But I know some of the parts have said that it would only be in the teacher resources unless they would assign it to the students, that it would maybe show up on that. So who is determining, like, are the teachers allowed to just put in whatever resources they want that might be in there? Or, you know, if we approve the curriculum, are we approving the teachers to make that choice to, you know, just put in whatever from the current, you know, if they would want to add from there? Or how are we knowing who is adding that material?
Yeah, so for grade five, the By the Way, the By the Way blog will not be available for students. Teachers will still see it in their accounts. And so when they build their lessons, they could pull things from it. But that's the work we would do in the summer, to line up those lessons and get all that set up. And so we would do that together and kind of vet that. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I can have other questions. I don't think I'm going to.
Keep going, yeah. Do you have more questions?
Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, please.
No, if I think of other things, or do you have more questions?
Okay, yeah, please reach out if you do, because we can certainly talk about it here. I'm happy to talk about it further, okay?
So kind of piggybacking off all of these questions, they're with current events.
Yes.
Obviously, U.S. history, that's one book, that's one grade.
Right.
But what's happening in Ukraine?
Yes.
That's obviously a current event. Would that be something that could be discussed? I mean, that's a world event, that's not a U.S. history event. Is that, is that an example of something that a teacher could say, "Let's talk about what's happening in Ukraine"?
I would say definitely. I think back to, so policy committee, we just talked about, and I'm not going to be able to cite the exact policy, but we just talked about kind of sensitive topics at policy committee the other night. And I was happy to see that because there's kind of a list of things that if you're going to survey kids or do certain things, you need to have parent permission or parent opt-out or things like that. So we would, if we did that, we certainly would make sure to look at that policy and be appropriate to that, and then let parents know ahead of time or whatever appropriate measures to notify people about that before we did that. But yes, that could definitely be something that we would talk about. Toni, go ahead.
Toni?
I, I was, this is, this is a miscommunication or misunderstanding.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because I was under the impression that, that there's just so much that we don't get to cover that's before 9/11 and even just in general, whether it's math, science, literature, that I really feel like it's not a good use of teachers' or students' time to spend any time talking about anything that is happening right now because things are changing so fast. We don't have all the information. And it's just, it's, it's not a good use of time.
I think that's a valid concern. And I do think that when we build those lessons in the summer, we certainly can definitely talk about that and plan around that. I guess, like Joel, with your question, what I'm thinking is, kids are living in the real world, right? And they come in with questions, and they come in with ideas, and they ask questions. And so we probably wouldn't build a lesson around that, but if it comes up, we would make sure that we were having appropriate conversations. And if we needed to delve into it deeper, getting the correct parent permission or getting the correct curriculum permission or whatever to do that. So I, we have to have some flexibility in that because of the world we live in. And so not to say that, I have a hard time saying we would never ever teach current events. I think we have to be responsive to kids. But I do believe we have to follow a process and bring the correct materials and things forward that make sense and follow policy.
And I think the process that we use needs to be something that we work on to ensure that the people that are worried about just things being brought up that weren't planned, and then that we, people need to feel, parents need to feel comfortable that, that there aren't going to be surprises about
I agree.
what their kids come home. And they have a reason to be concerned because we have stumbled a few times.
I agree. Yeah, and that, and that brings me back to that policy again. I was very happy to read that and see that because that gave me some clarity on things that we need parental permission for, we need opt-out for, we need those kinds of things. So it brought some clarity to that.
So I'm sorry, I'm struggling here a little bit. I realize I'm old, so I was not in school when 9/11 happened. But obviously, that was a day that forever changed our country. People were frightened and afraid. I, as a parent and as a school board member, my kid is sitting in class. We'd want them to know what was going on in the world. We had no idea what was happening that day. So to say, "We're not going to teach anything about current events." I'm sorry, but that's happening today. I pray it never happens again, but if something like that happens, those TVs better be on, and we'd better be showing our kids what's going on. Whether, you know, if you're a parent and you're afraid of that, well, I suggest you come pick up your kid, because that was an important event. When I was in school, we watched things like, I don't know, I'm trying to think of like important things that we watched, but...
The Challenger.
The Challenger, like that kind of stuff. I mean, for heaven's sakes, those are, you know, real live things that are happening. I'm not talking about something that's Democratic or Republican. I'm talking about a real live current event. I feel like when I was a kid, we even read something weekly. That was like the weekly reader that had, you know, current events. And I feel like my social studies grade even had something that said, "Knows current events." And, you know, you got a plus or a minus or whatever that was. I mean, we had like little current event spelling bees kind of thing that the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel gave out. That's how old I am, so, okay. But my point is, I don't think that's appropriate to say that we're never going to teach anything past 9/11 because that's ridiculous because there are things that happen on any given day. Same with science. I mean, if all of a sudden we have some totally crazy weather, like it's 95 in May and last week it was 42, I would hope a science class might say, "Gee, that's a weird phenomenon known as blankety-blank." And maybe that wasn't necessarily in the curriculum for that day, but it was something that was live and just happened. And kids are like, "This is the weirdest weather we've ever had." So if there's a science teacher that can talk about that phenomena, I would hope that we wouldn't be so tied to, gee, we can't talk about that because it's not listed. Things happen every day in our lives, and guess what? Kids are doing this all day long. So they're reading it anyways. So I agree, we don't need people giving their opinions. But when it's simply a fact, such as 9/11, planes hit the Twin Towers. There's no, there was nothing more besides facts going on about that. It was true. People were watching it live happen on TV. So I guess, while I agree with you that we have made some stumbles, and I think it's important to acknowledge that and to get a strong process in place, what does curriculum look like? What do our teachers teach? The idea that we're going to handcuff them to say, "Well, you can't step outside this box," even though something insane's going on, well, that would be a real misstep on our part.
I agree, and I think that's why, like I was saying, kids will come in and say, "Oh my goodness, look what just happened," or "I saw this on the news," right? And so those are teachable moments. But I think we can line up our lessons for our best fit and do our best alignment to standards and all that, but daily things happen. So can I tell you that we're never going to teach current events? I can't tell you that. But I can tell you, we'll do our best to line up and bring forward what we have in the curriculum and what we can showcase. And then from there, we hire our teachers for a reason. We hire our teachers to be good stewards and to teach our kids and all that. And so then I, I put that responsibility on them with the kid that comes in and says, "Oh my goodness, I have uncle that lives in the Ukraine." You know what I mean? And so I just need to process that a minute, and that we're okay doing that.
Well, and I would think some of that comes down to training of our teachers. You know, we have in-service days, we have training. I mean, there are things that you, we all do this at work. Um, you know, it comes down from the boss, and you're told you're gonna do it this way. And if you don't do it that way, then guess what? You don't work here anymore. So I, I mean, if we're setting up standards, and all of our, and this isn't standards-based stuff. I'm saying standards for our teachers.
Yes.
And what we expect, and then we are, you know, basically going through that with our teachers to say, hey, you didn't meet these standards as you agreed to do. Well, you know, then there's other opportunity to help that teacher to understand our standards were serious, and, and now you don't work here anymore. So I, I mean, I guess I just wanna be careful of saying, there are standards, and there are ways that we educate our teachers. But to, to totally say we're never gonna do that would be ridiculous, in my mind.
Thank you.
Connie? Oh, good, all right. Any, any other thoughts? Joel? I guess I just wanna reiterate, I take the point on US History, and as it relates to where we're gonna stop in that book, is on page eight seventy or nine eleven. But, you know, there could be, there could be events happening in the world around us that, you know, I don't know that lesson plans would necessarily be immediately put into place tonight for something that's not gonna teach tomorrow. But, um, I, I just think we need to be very clear on that. Because if, let's say Queen Elizabeth dies tomorrow, and one of our teachers brings it up in, in a, in a history class tomorrow, I don't want the teachers thinking, oh boy, I'm gonna get in trouble. I'm not supposed to talk about anything past nine eleven during the school day. That is not true. That's not, that's, that's not the case on what we're talking about here, correct?
Right.
Thank you.
I, I just wanna make sure that we don't get, I can see a student coming in, talking about something that it is a concern of theirs and a valid concern, but misappropriating the entire class, period, to something that maybe could be handled in a different way.
Sure, like off-topic?
Yeah, and, and then, then we end up with the road to chaos, and, and not teaching the stuff that we intend to teach. And, um, I, I mean, I, my, my kids are a little older than yours, Nancy. So I actually had to take my oldest son to, um, school on nine eleven, this beautiful September day. And I remember watching the towers get hit as I'm feeding my, uh, one-year-old daughter oatmeal. And I still had to decide, am I, am I gonna get up and take my kid to school? And I did, because I wanted normal, I didn't wanna panic. I didn't know what was happening yet. And my husband at the time, he was on the road for work and doing sales calls. And even though I called him several times throughout the day to try to explain to him what was happening, he didn't have a clue until about six PM that night, to the extent of the devastation. And actually, the fact that, I appreciated that he could calmly get home. I, I want our kids, if something were to happen while they're in school, I don't want everyone freaking out. There, there does, something can happen, and you can, like, when the Challenger exploded, we knew that wasn't gonna be us. But I don't want, if even, if the, if, if I could, if nine eleven were to happen again, God help us, I hope it doesn't. But I do not want TVs being turned on instantly, because can you imagine the, the chaos and pandemonium that would happen in, in if, if everyone just started reacting? Um, it's like, we gotta stay calm, we're gonna get through the day, and you're gonna get home safely. That's what I would hope that we would do as a district. Um, maybe we need to play out some scenarios in our heads.
Well, I think today's difference is this, and we allow this in school. So you, you, students all have these. So the idea, you're just gonna have students rolling into a classroom crying and hysterical. So somehow, you've gotta have a system then in place that says, how do we handle that?
Yep.
So I, I again go back to the training that we would have with our teachers. And again, uh, you know, there could be an instance where you want to watch something live. The Challenger is a bad example, but something happy and pleasant that, you know, whatever. So there might be that instance, but I mean, you have to understand that this is a different world. All these kids are gonna know what's going on. So they're already rolling in, very upset. And, and this is happening with kids, what, I would ask any third-grade teacher, that they have kids who have cell phones, second, third grade already. So that's a huge difference than what we experienced then. So I mean, there's gotta be a system in place then. Again, my point is, put the system in place, make sure the training is there. When people can't follow the system and the training, that's when administration has to step in. But assume that our teachers are doing the good work that they're meant to do. And, and if the training is strong, and people are adhering to the training, then we shouldn't have problems. Not none would, okay? But, but if not, then, then we're failing as a system by not ensuring that our teachers are properly trained, and they're sticking with the system.
I said one more.
Go ahead.
The, the issue I see with, um, with, with allowing or, or not vetting out, you know, current events from, from time to allow them to become history, is you have emotional discussions on current events from teachers, students, stuff like that, that you might get more opinion-based than factual-based contents. You know, does, does that make sense?
Like student opinion, do you mean?
No, teacher opinion I'm more worried about. Um, you know, because a student asking a teacher something that's not vetted or put in a, a history book, no one knows what they're about to say. So now you're, now you're opening up the opportunity for someone to go off-topic, or give their own opinion in that scenario, and maybe false information, if you, for all we know. You know what I mean?
Yeah, understood. I think, um, it's a hot topic, right? And one that we need to plan around and follow policy on. And I think if we do that, we'll do our due diligence to make sure that we're doing the best for our kids.
Excellent discussion. Any other thoughts?
I said one more.
Go ahead.
Uh, not with this, what we were just talking about, but in all of the question and answer stuff, I was just wondering, how many items did we find that will be blocked content? Do you know? Was there a lot?
So, I don't know if I can, it's not really items, John, it's more like, um, so I can just give you, so there's something in, there was something in, in the platform called Global Human Rights. And it was just in there as a sample, but the way it was put in the padlet, it looked like it was maybe part of what we would purchase. And when I reached out to the vendor, apparently that's a high school piece that was just put in, because it was a new content thing they were bringing forward, and so they just put it in as a sample. Well, that part kind of set some people on edge, right? Because first of all, it's like a ninth grade or higher reading level. And second of all, it was topics that weren't finished, first of all, and that were, um, kind of more like with a, a high school US History Global Studies type course. And so when I reached out, they're like, oh, don't worry, that's, that's not even something that your kids would ever even have access to. And if you would have to purchase a high school textbook to get that. So some of that I've listed in there, because there were some pieces like that. Um, that By the Way Blog came up a couple times, so that's listed several times as here, is like, we won't use that. Um, I'm trying to think, oh, there's another book called The Research Companion, and that's a book for fifth grade also. And so we're not purchasing that book for students, but it, it's a, it's a teacher resource, so the teachers can use parts of that to build their lesson, but the students won't have it. So there's things like that. But it's all listed in those pages, it's just kind of in different spots, based on when people asked about it.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, I do have one more question.
Go ahead.
Um, it seems like a lot of the community feedback that we had gotten, I mean, and maybe that's just the questions are what you put in there, maybe there's more, but I'm wondering if there was, um, much good feedback? Because it seems like to me there was a lot more questions and concerns than positive, like, feedback over the curriculum.
Yeah, so everything you see on that thirty-eight-page document is everything we received. It wasn't all received at the same time. And if you look at the very top of it, I listed the dates that all of it was received also. So, um, part of them, when we had the padlet open for a month, there was a Google form that people could fill out with feedback. And so the very top of that feedback came from that. And then there were a couple people that spoke at board meetings, that then submitted their, like, speech to me in writing, or speech to the superintendent or something, so those pieces I included. Um, we had a couple stakeholders that were very, very diligent about asking questions, and they'd submit like written documents to me with other questions on them. Um, so I put off, I, I took everything I absolutely received and put it in this document. So anything I received is, is in here. And I, in the very beginning, um, there was a concern that I had altered some of the feedback. I did not do that, and I want you to know that I took exactly from the Google form and transferred it into this. And this, this format, FAQs, was a request by the Curriculum Committee. And so that's why I put it into this document.
So follow-up on that, are you able, I, I'm not looking for people's names or anything like that, but considering we have over six thousand students in the district, um, you know, was this thirty-eight pages of, of information, was it written by twelve people? Was it forty different people who commented? Was it four? Was it four hundred?
It was five.
Yeah, so the written feedback was from five people, and then there were two additional people that spoke at one board meeting on this topic. And there was no written feedback from them, but they spoke as part of public participation.
So approximately seven.
Seven.
Thank you.
I do wanna add to that, I do know several of the people that, um, that did go over the curriculum. And they, many of them do have an education background and, um, have worked as teachers or on the board before. So they are credible, um, people that have gone through it.
Yeah, thank you, Melanie. And I, and I know too, like, some of the feedback was like spelling errors and things like that. And I've reached out to the vendor about that, and that's an easy thing for them to fix, like in the digital platform and stuff. And then they also were very adamant, like, if we know certain spelling errors in the book, or things, they'll correct them before they send us the copies and things like that.
Thank you. We'll see this at the next meeting.
Yes.
As an action item.
I have one more, aren't you guys excited?
Oh, that's right, with regard to math, correct? Digital tools, grades K through four for literacy and math.
I do, so we're gonna switch presentations here. Well, that's a feedback one. Okay, so similarly, this is set up similar to the first presentation I did. And this, this is a little bit newer topic, because Curriculum Committee was aware this was coming in order to Curriculum Committee, but then we didn't have Curriculum Committee. So this is the first time this is being presented. So I will talk through it, and if you guys have questions, please ask, and then we can kind of proceed from there where we want to go. Um, so this is about K-4, Digital Tools for Literacy and Math. Um, we are, um, going to go through a presentation, again, it's a quick overview of the digital tools, um, the feedback in timeline thus far, and then steps to move forward. So our current fourth-grade, um, K through four elementary schools work, and literacy and math takes place in like a workshop setting. And in that workshop setting, students do some kind of structured lessons, and then they have independent practice time. And during that independent practice time, um, they're doing a variety of different things. But this is a perfect venue to have students work on digital tools for that content area. And part of the reason is, um, part of the reason for bringing these tools forward is we currently do have kids using digital tools, but we have not purchased anything from a district lens, where we vet it from the district lens, and then all schools have access to the same thing. So right now, one school might be using one digital tool for the literacy, one might be using a different tool for literacy. One might be using one for math, one might be using a different one for math. And the opportunity to do this, this brings in kind of a standard set of tools, K-4, and it brings us kind of a really unique opportunity to do some things. So first of all, it gives us kind of a level experience for kids, right? The other thing is, with these types of tools, we can gather data and get feedback on our kids on a regular basis, system-wide, to know how they're progressing or know how they're doing. In addition, the, just the quality of these tools that they've gotten to, teachers can use this data to form small groups, to do interventions with kids, a whole bunch of different things. So this brings a really unique opportunity to have kind of a global district look and global district feel for student learning. So that's the first piece. Um, so over the last, um, months, we've worked on a number of things. Um, we have obviously worked through RFP, Request for Proposal. We sort and raise those responses. We had teachers in to review the tools. And we actually had, um, was it nineteen, I think we had nineteen vendors respond to our Request for Proposal, so it was a big amount. Um, we brought in twelve vendors total between, um, literacy and math, for teachers to review and see the materials, and have the vendors present the tools and give them access. Um, we did place those links on our website and locate them on a computer for public review. Because of the way, again, this was done, we didn't put a computer at the library this time, but we did open it up kind of twenty-four-seven again, like we did with the social studies piece, so people would have a lot, a lot of opportunity to give feedback and look at the tools. So they were available for review. Um, we also, excitingly, had twenty-seven teachers that did a trial period with these tools. And so, um, kind of working through the principles, they reached out to their teachers to see if anybody would want to give them a try. The trials were short, because one of the things we wanted to be conscious of was not having students delve deep into a tool that we hadn't properly vetted yet, or adopted yet, or anything like that, but just to give them a trial experience with it, so teachers could get the feel of it and see how it would be beneficial in the classroom. So we had twenty-seven kindergarten to fourth-grade teachers participate in the trials, and then they also gave us feedback on the tools. So that was very helpful. So we narrowed our focus to four vendors, two for math and two literacy. The two literacy tools have very different purposes. One is called Lexia Core Five, and that's for increasing literacy skills. One is called Amira, and Amira is kind of an interesting thing, because it is AI, or artificial intelligence. Um, it conducts running records, and gives student feedback, and provides teachers with data on running records as if they were doing their own running record. So it's listed as a teacher assistant, it does not take the place of a teacher, but it's a very cool support for teachers in doing running records. It's, it's really pretty cool. I know, um, one of the teachers had said, the voice is kind of creepy. And I said, I agree, because when we were doing the, um, demonstration, it is AI, so it's like Siri, right? Her voice is kind of like Siri. Um, but the thing, she said, the voice is creepy, but the kids really enjoyed it, because they're used to hearing that. So she's like, it didn't bother them at all. I was the only one that thought it was kind of weird. So, um, it was really cool to hear that. The two math tools, um, one is called Happy Numbers, and one is called Dreambox. Um, both are to increase numeracy knowledge and application along with math skills, and they kind of come in different formats. So Happy Numbers is kind of like a, kind of a game-based format, but it's really solid, um, deep problem-solving. And Dreambox is kind of, has a different type of game-based format, but gives tools for kids and gives them like tokens and things like that, too, but has a really solid, um, deep kind of math problem-solving part to it. So that's pretty cool. So this is kind of what we're seeking for a timeline. Um, we're, obviously, the discussion tonight, and then we're looking to bring this forward for possible approval on the twenty-third. Um, obviously, this timeline is compact, because again, you know, we didn't have Curriculum Committee in between here to bring it to Curriculum Committee, so I'm open to any discussion, um, questions people have. I do have one feedback form, I think it's linked in here, in case you're looking for it, but I will pull it up here. So there was not a lot of feedback from public stakeholders on this. There's actually, um, I'm just, I'm just gonna scroll through it. So there's actually six pieces of feedback, and it came from two people. And so, um, some of the feedback, if you, and I'll give you a chance to kind of look through it, but some of the feedback was just questions about the two of themselves. And then some of it was, um, like, I, I don't know the people personally that gave the feedback, but one obviously was a teacher in another district that's used some of these tools. So that person gave feedback about kind of how they used it, and questions or concerns they had about it, or whatever. But, um, and then the other feedback was very positive, just about how, um, they seem like the tools the kids would enjoy and learn a lot from, and data could be used, and things like that. So, um, I know you guys had a chance to look through it, but certainly if you have any questions, please ask. So I know you guys had a chance to look through it, but certainly if you have any questions, please ask.
Any questions?
So for the reading, like, the literacy and the two reading ones,
Yes.
Like, who, has anybody looked through the actual, like, reading material that is on it? I apologize, I did not go or get an opportunity to look through this when it was open. Once I was made aware, I was not able to.
Yeah.
So yeah, I'm just wondering.
So Lexia was that the one you're wondering about?
Yeah, well, and then A-Mira, I mean, you would be reading, they'd be reading something, right? Some kind of content, right? And that's how it-
Right, so A-Mira is kind of cool because I can bring any book I'm reading, and I read it to the computer, to the lady on the computer.
Okay, so it's not-
Yeah, so that part is kind of all vetted through our literacy adoption and all that. But that, A-Mira is really just responding to whatever the student's reading to her, for that part. Lexia is a little bit different. Lexia is an early literacy kind of skill-building tool. And so, I have quite a few years of experience with it. I was actually, worked with them in another place that I worked. And so, their stuff is very research-based, it's based on, the owner, actually, his son was dyslexic, and that's how he developed the tool to help all students. But they have components that are online, they have components that, when the student does this work, it populates data into the teacher's account, so the teacher can see exactly what the student needs help on. And then the teacher can pull up, like, the student needs to learn their vowel sounds, and the teacher can pull that up, and it gives the teacher the tools to teach the student their vowel sounds. Then there's also a piece that goes along with that, that's a homework piece that the teacher can print off or sign into PDF to parents to do with kids at home. And then there's just additional what they call skill builders, where it's, like, if you had a small group working, you could give them some skill builders to work on that are also about literacy acquisition. So it's pretty high-quality, it's pretty in-depth, but it's all based on the four or five pieces of literacy and then standards.
Sure. But what about the actual, like, material that they're reading? Like, what names of the books, or, you know, stuff like that, is that available to parents? Would they be able to see what-
Parents can log in, parents can log in and see it. It's not books. Lexia bases their, each grade level and each level within the grade levels has like a frame, like, you might be at the beach, or you might be in Paris, or you might be, and so they kind of frame it around that, and then do literacy activities around, like, an environment.
It's like reading phrases and-
Right.
Even just words at times. It's not like a catalog of books.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, that's my question.
Other questions? John?
Yeah, I said one. So this says, this takes place in a workshop setting. So that's in class?
Yes.
So will the students, if whatever we do adopt or take on, will they have an opportunity to, I guess, get familiar with them over the summer by chance? I mean, can you log into these at home?
You can log in at home, yes. I mean, that's part of these tools, which is really cool. I know from a budgetary standpoint, depending on when we purchase them, it depends on which school year we can use them in. So if we purchased them after July one, they wouldn't be able to be used until that school year.
Sure.
So, yes and no, it kind of depends on dates.
Sure, probably.
Other questions? Thank you for the introduction to this topic, we'll see this on our next agenda as well.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity to talk with you about these things. I appreciate all the feedback, and we will definitely be back next time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and so our final discussion item, First Reading of Policies in the Five Hundred Series, Personnel. And Superintendent Wimmer, are you still with us?
I am, but as you go through this, Letty Hampson, this series is Personnel, Letty wants part the work on this series, so I'm going to let you take it away.
Fantastic, welcome, Mr. Hampson.
Thank you, members of the board. So we met and reviewed those five hundred policies. As is typical most policy reviews, we took the WASB examples, lined them up against our existing policies, identified opportunities where perhaps our language was superior, and opportunities where perhaps the WASB language provided enhancements to what we had provided. What you'll notice as you look through here is probably the number-one thing we did was a lot of proposed renumbering of policies. For whatever reason, over the years, a lot of the numbering of these policies has become out of alignment with what the WASB recommendations are, for reasons that are pretty apparent. We do think it's appropriate to get those renumbered in alignment with WASB to make, it helps with the cross-referencing of policies, as well as just the organization and making that intuitive. As you go through all the draft language there, you're able to see small adjustments in most places. There are some policies where we completely replaced the existing policy with new language. And that's really around WASB recommending enhanced language in certain areas such as like equal opportunity employment, harassment of employees, things around, especially things that are governed by, say, state or federal legislation or mandates. For example, several changes to Title IX investigations were implemented by the federal government within the last four years. That crosses over to a lot of different areas and requires updating a policy. So in several areas, you'll see where we completely replaced the policy, but it wasn't where it was eliminated, it was just really replaced by something more amped up, more updated with current language. You see that also in things like, that relate to health and safety policy. As we all know, laws or statutes around, you know, personal health privacy and things like that are frequently updated and have been updated since several of those policies were updated. So things like alcohol and drug-free workplace, staff physical examinations, those sorts of things have been updated in the proposed drafts with more thorough language to simply reflect updates in law that had taken place around those items. So there's obviously a lot of different pieces here, but I'd be happy to answer questions you may have around any of those, any of those policies. Again, this is simply a first reading, so first opportunity to take a look at those things. I would say we were, you know, Joel and Chris, you were there for our committee meeting. You know, we were actually able to get through a lot of these pretty quickly. There were a lot of policies that we made very little change, or maybe a word or two here, things like that. But we had quite a bit in place that was in a good spot. I would say the biggest changes were around simply kind of re-updating with some of those new legislative pieces that have come along since the last time.
And as you said, that's one of the benefits of at least starting with the WASB templates for these policies. What I appreciate is the policy committee's work that we don't just blindly adopt them, but we take a look and make sure, is it a good fit for the, for our district and for our community? Tweaking it is necessary, but there is, we gain the advantage that as the law changes, if it aligns with the WASB policy, they alert us, correct, as to changes that we may need to consider to our policies.
So WASB will put out an annual update, they'll say, here are things, you know, we updated in our policy resource guide in the last year. And then if there is something urgent that comes out with a change in legislation, something like that, they'll push out bulletins saying, hey, you may want to drop this one to the top of your list because of that.
Any questions?
All of the changes and revisions, new language is all linked in the bottom on Board Docs here, so this is first reading. If you haven't looked at it yet, take the next couple of weeks and take a look at it if you want. And this one was a pretty easy series, in my opinion, but-
There are a couple policies we discussed that are not here that are in the Five Hundred that we talked about bringing back to committee, getting additional insight from WASB or our own attorney. So there's a couple that we'll bring forward at a future policy committee.
And remind me, I was just consulting board policy here around the adoption potentially of these changes. So next time would be the second reading. And there may be opportunities if all members are present, and we agree that we can take a vote if it's unanimous, so-
Correct, if it's a unanimous vote on the second reading, those changes can go into effect. One thing to just keep in mind as we do that, you know, I please, I encourage you to reach out if you have questions between now and then, because on a lot of these, we're removing a policy while simultaneously adding its replacement, and it would be bad if we were to approve removing one without putting the replacement in, or vice versa, adding it without removing its partner that it's replacing. So it's important that a lot of these happen together. So if you see concerns or questions about a specific one, you know, reach out, let's get that clarified so that we're prepared at the next meeting to address those questions, so we can put together a good motion for you. Because we would be left with a pretty messy situation if we were to, you know, remove some of these without having this replacement ready to go the same day.
Just a reminder, thank you. All right?
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. So that concludes our discussion items. So let's move to our future agenda items. Let's pull it up here. First, we have our board meeting calendar, and our next meeting for this board will take place on May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, at 5:30 PM here in the Education Service Center. And then we have our next two meetings in June, June sixth and June twentieth. And I believe we're looking at rescheduling Policy Committee and also next Curriculum Committee. So those are the only dates that I mentioned that we've got set at this time. Any questions on the calendar? And we're onto items for follow-up and communication. And one item that I was made aware of is our West Bend West Athletic Director mentioned that we will need to consider a WIAA application for spring sports, for girls soccer for West Bend East and West Bend West. And so, we'll see that on our agenda next time for action. So just wanted to point that out, and if anyone has questions on that in advance, certainly reach out to me or to Superintendent Wimmer. Are there any other items for follow-up and communication? All right. Well, here it is, and we've reached the end of our planned agenda, but we do have one or more topics that are appropriate for discussion in executive session. As such, I will move to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen-point-eight-five-one-C to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and take any such action as necessary based on its discussion, namely, compensation and employment. Would there be a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nancy. Motion second to adjourn to executive session. Final discussion. I believe this is a roll call vote, so I will call the roll. Ms. Erbaut?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mr. Swigerfuss? Yes. Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Mr. Redholtz is absent? Mr. Ondert?
Yes.
And Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Great, thank you, that motion appears. We stand adjourned to executive session.